Now across the order of the October 19th, 2023, um, State National Board.
Yes, Mayor Donches, Mike Peterson.
Here.
Scott Leclair, Adam Varley.
Here.
Maggie Harper, here. Alderman Klee, Dan Hudson.
Here.
Bob Ballinger.
Here.
Larry Hirsch.
Here.
And Alderman Tebow.
I'm just noticing that Bob and I don't like to talk.
Oh.
Take one of these.
Yeah, we can share one.
Here it comes.
Enjoy it.
Thanks. Thank you.
Asking you shall receive.
All right. Okay, so we have a quorum. Next up on the agenda, we have approval of minutes from the September 21st meeting. Has anyone had an opportunity to review the minutes and willing to make a motion? Or are there any comments on the minutes? Mr. Hirsch?
Move to accept a minutes as written.
Motion by Mr. Hirsch to accept a minutes as written. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, that motion passes. Communications.
We do not have any.
Right. All right, well, that's easy. Uh, report of committee and liaison. Sorry, anything to report?
Um, the historical commission meeting was actually canceled this week. We did not have any cases.
Okay. Great. Okay, um, given that we do not have any regular cases on the agenda, only referrals and other business, I'm going to skip the reading of the procedure, other than to say, as to the referral matters, we will, of course, accept public comment to the extent there is any. So with respect to the old business subdivision plans and old business site plans, I would just note that the, the four cases all related to the Mohawk Tannery Site have been tabled until our December 7th, 2023 meeting. So we, as I said, we have no regular items on the agenda, so we'll move right to other business. So the first item under other business is a review of the tentative agenda to determine proposals of regional impact. So has anyone had a chance to review the tentative agenda and have a view one way or the other? Mr. Ballinger?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, yes. Like to make a recommendation that there are no projects of regional impact based on the technical review committee meeting of October 16th, 2023.
Okay. Uh, so that motion by Mr. Ballinger is that there are no proposals of regional impact reflected on the tentative agenda? Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Okay, next up, under other business, we have referral of R-23-0163, authorizing City of Nashville to grant an easement to public service of New Hampshire, DVA Eversource Energy for tax map 43 lot 105 and 106. And understand, if you could just please state your name and address for the record? That'd be great.
Uh, sure, Donald Stotes, uh, representing Eversource Community Relations, addressed 96 River Road, Manchester, New Hampshire, uh, 276 Amber Street here in Nashua. Um, yeah, this easement is basically, uh, we cannot access, uh, or easily access, uh, the poles over near the walkway, and our plan is usually to put all those poles underground for safety and also for, so that we can better access for all its operations for emergency response and for upgrades. And so that's just the, uh, just, uh, why we are requesting the easement from the city.
Okay.
Any questions?
Questions? Mr. Hirsch?
Is this on the, uh, the 276 Amber Street property?
No, 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 this, uh, that's our, where our area works here is. This is over, uh, by Margaritas off of Nashua Drive, uh, Canoustria area.
I think we're all set.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, so again, this is a, this is a referral from the Board of Aldermen. So our, um, our obligation here is to, to make a referral, favorable, unfavorable, um, or, you know, with, with comment back to the Board of Aldermen. This seems pretty straightforward. Grant an easement, it sounds like to, to allow for underground easily, which is something we're encouraging in any event, so, um, seems like it would be reasonable to make a favorable recommendation here, but Mr. Hudson, did you want to add something?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, just, I, I just wanted to tell the board, I'm familiar with this, this is related to the riverfront project. Uh, city has a very small triangular piece, kind of abutted by, um, you know, Margarita's property and then the railroad and whatnot, and it's right, right next to the river and, um, according to them and, um, wanting to have them accomplish some utility work down there, uh, granting the easement is, is needed, and it's been a while in the works, but it's finally been negotiated and all legal is satisfied with the language, so I would just, uh, affirm from the board that I think it's appropriate to move forward with it.
Okay, great. With that, is someone interested in, willing to make a motion? Mr. Chair? Mr. Ballinger?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'd like to make a motion, uh, the planning board grant a favorable recommendation regarding resolution R-23-163, uh, authorizing city to grant an easement to PSNH, uh, DVA Eversource Energy for the two subject lots as requested.
Thank you. So a motion by Mr. Ballinger to make a favorable recommendation on R-23-0163. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch? We had it sort of same time there, all right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have, uh, referral of O-23-062, amending the land use code regarding wetlands buffer for vernal pools. And I understand, speak to this as well?
Uh, hello, uh, my name is Sherry Dutzy, 18th Ward Terrace, Nashua, uh, and I'm here on behalf of the Nashua Conservation Commission. We requested, um, that Alderman Jettie and Alderman Dodd put, doubt, um, put this change forward. Uh, currently, the buffer for vernal pools is, uh, 20 feet, and we're asking for a 100-foot buffer. I believe the Army Corps of Engineers even goes up to like a 400-foot buffer to protect, um, the species that take advantage of a vernal pool. I am not an expert on that, but, uh, we do have a friend at the Conservation Commission who can speak to, uh, the species who live in a vernal pool and why, uh, having a protective buffer, an increase in the protective buffer is important. Does anybody have any other questions for me, or?
Uh, just, just out of curiosity, now, I don't know if you know the answer to this, but how does this, oh, actually, never mind, I'm seeing it right here. So it's a, for prime wetlands, it's a 75-foot buffer, and so this would be...
Is that what, is that what was put forward, was a 75-foot buffer?
Uh, I'm, I'm saying that, I, I was just comparing it to what the, the other buffers stand and were, and so for the vernal...
Prime wetland is 75, I believe we're asking for 100.
Right. You're, yes, that's correct, yeah, it's 100 is the proposal for the vernal pools. Um, so I was just gonna ask if you knew what the, what the buffer was for the prime wetlands, but then I saw it in the, in the ordinance, so. Uh, questions? Mr. Hirsch?
Yeah, uh, has anyone done a calculation of how much land will be taken out of use, basically, by this? Any land we, not developable, is there any kind of calculation? For example, over 20 to 100 feet of a buffer?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Hirsch, I'm, I'm hard here.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I should've been more careful, I apologize. Has anyone done a calculation about the acreage that would be involved that can no longer be developed or used around? It's a major increase going from 20 to 100 feet, and I'm, I'm a little bit confused about why, why, why such a large, uh, change, and I'm a little bit concerned also about the economic, economic impact to landowners. Has anyone done a...
I don't, I don't believe anybody has, has done that.
So we don't really know the implications at the end of the day, and these are vernal pools, which I understand are seasonal.
I mean, you...
As opposed to prime wetlands.
I would say, you know, that most of the vernal pools that, that we've identified have either been on conservation land, or, um, they've been on city land such as, um, the, the new school, um, the McCarthy School. I believe they have, um, several vernal pools there. Yeah, I don't, we, I don't think we have ever had anything come forward where there's been a vernal pool on a, on a piece of private property. I'm trying to think.
But we don't really, no one, has anyone ever, ever found out how many vernal pools there are?
As far as I know.
So we really don't know the implications of what we're recommending, the economic implications. And again, going from 20 to 100 feet is quite a change, uh, and if the prime wetlands are only 75 feet.
Well, there may be an economic impact, that's true, okay? But I mean, the, the real issue and what the Conservation Commission is concerned about is the protecting of the species that are, um, that are part of the vernal pool, and, and studies have shown that 20 feet, I mean, because the species, um, fairy shrimp and spotted salamander, um, and various frogs will breed in a vernal pool, and then, you know, they, they move out of the vernal pool and to upland areas, okay? After, after the breeding session, season, and you just need more areas of protection so that they can raise their young and be, you know, be part of the ecosystem. So would there be an, could there be an economic impact? I imagine there could be, but then again, you know, do you want development within 20 feet of a vernal pool? And the reason we have critical buffers and, critical wetland buffers and prime wetland buffers is because we know that those are, um, habitats that need to be product, need to be protected. So I mean, you could say the same thing about our prime wetlands. Um, I mean, you know, why, why have a prime wetland buffer? Why not just develop right up to the water's edge?
Right, but what's at issue here is the issue of the vernal, the vernal pools, and my only concern is, it doesn't seem like it's, from what you're telling me, anyone's really evaluated how many pools are involved and what the overall implications might be. And also, the difference between 20 feet and maybe 40 or 60 or 80 feet or 100 feet, I, I just don't, it seems, it, it, like, not totally thought through, unless I'm missing a lot on this.
I'm sorry, see that...
It, it seems like the project, this, this resolution hasn't been thought through completely, because I'm not hearing any, any analysis or any kind of basic information.
Can I ask a question of staff? Oh, sorry.
Might have some information on that. There, there could be, um, Mary Lou, is there any analysis that's been done by the Army Corps of Engineers, and you want to speak to that?
She'll have to come on.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I mean, because this is not, and this is not a new concept, and like I say, I mean, the, the Army Corps actually recommends a 400-foot buffer for protection, but if you want to speak, yeah, Mary Lou knows more of the specifics.
Hi, my name's Mary Lou Sozek, uh, 15 Rocky Hill Drive, Nashua. I'm a conservation biologist, I've helped Sherry and other members of the commission with various, uh, walks and talks and stuff. Basically, I can speak a little bit to the economic impact. The vernal pools are typically very small. You know, they're not even a third of an acre big.
Right.
I mean, they're, they're pretty small, so a 20-foot buffer around the edge of a fairly small pool doesn't provide a lot of protection for the frogs and salamanders going in and out of it. And expanding that to 100 feet, which is in line with all the recommendations of other, uh, Army Corps of Engineers, uh, other conservation organizations, will just give them a little bit more breathing room, free from disturbance. And I, you know, again, I, I don't thi, I don't know of any studies that have calculated what the additional, uh, square footage or acreage around, but I don't think it would be that large, because the pools themselves are not that large.
I just had a quick question for staff on this. So, hey, correct me if I'm wrong, but is the, the wetland buffer restriction is something that is within the discretion of the planning board to modify? So could the planning board allow on a, on a case-by-case basis, impact within the buffer?
Well, actually, you'd still be following the special exception as you would for the prime wetlands and others, so, and I think, just, just from my experience, 125 is not, not unusual for vernal pools because of the upland species, and, uh, so, if that helps.
So, so just to confirm, then it would be a special, special exception before the zoning board would be the, the remedy if someone wanted?
Right.
Okay.
Check the card.
Mr. Peterson?
I received an email today from a resident of Nashua regarding this ordinance, and in it was a PDF file entitled, "Vernal Pool Best Practice, Best Management Practices Issued by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, New England District", and in it, they go through all this, and, uh, their best practice recommendation is, uh, 100 feet up to 750 feet. So they're recommending 100-feet minimum of, of, of radius or of clearance around the vernal pool from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers.
That's the document I was referring to, yeah.
I didn't realize that.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yeah, I, I didn't realize the Army Corps of Engineers dealt with vernal pools. I thought it was just navigable waterways.
I learned that today.
Yeah, that's something.
And that's minimum, is their minimum distance away? 100 is what they're recommending, recommending, such as, uh, they said, sometimes the salamanders need to like, travel away, then come back.
Mr. Haver?
Um, just a question, because I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not very familiar with vernal pools. I mean, the animals I am, but what, like, what constitutes a vernal pool versus, you know, lack of better words, a large puddle from a lot of rain in the spring? Like, what's, what's the difference?
A vernal pool has particular, uh, water quality issues, I mean, uh, characteristics, not issues. Uh, it's shallow enough that fish can't live there year-round. Some vernal pools will completely dry up, others will just shrink, and the lack of fish who are predators to the other animals, um, just prevents predation and allows the salamanders and wood frogs to, uh, to reproduce. There can be puddles that form in the spring that don't support these species, and they can dry up too. So really, the definition of a vernal pool is a seasonal wetland that has these species in them. There can be a similar area that looks a lot like it, but for some reason unknown to us, th, these species don't go into that puddle. So I, I don't know what more to say, uh, it's just, it, it's just the, uh, repeated use of this little depression in the soil that supports these species. And there's great site fidelity after breeding, the young will come back to the same vernal pool, and that's why protection of them is, is important. There have been, uh, attempts to create vernal pools by making little depressions in the soils, and that has not succeeded. So there, that's one of the reasons why it's important to protect the ones that we know we have, because you can't, you can't create a, a vernal pool. It's just something, uh, particular characteristics in the forest that promote this retention of water.
So then, I'm sorry, a follow-up question. So have these bodies of water been identified already, or?
Many of them have, yeah. I mean, uh, there was a survey done on some of the conservation units, and then I, the school property that Sherry mentioned, um, a wetland scientist identified the vernal pools, and I've been in, I've been to several of them, and you can, you can tell that they're active, because in the spring you can see the egg masses of the salamanders, and you can hear the wood frogs chirping. They, uh, they sound almost like ducks cracking, and, uh...
Well, I guess the reason I'm asking is because as far as, you know, ma, mandating something like this, if someone comes in September to get approval on something, then it wouldn't...
You, you're right. In, in September, you would not be able to tell if something is a vernal pool, except sometimes there are certain species of clams that will only live in these, uh, temporary wetlands. Um, I know it's crazy, maybe they just bury and burrow into the, the mud, and if you can see those shells along the edges of a dried-up pool, you can say, yeah, this is really a vernal pool, but it's very, it's generally difficult to determine a vernal pool when there's not water and when it's not in the springtime.
So the, the process, I mean, the process that normally happens for the Conservation Commission is that you have undeveloped land. Um, a developer wants to develop it, and they recognize that there are wetlands on that property, okay? And so before they come for the Conservation Commission, they have a wetland scientist go out and evaluate all of the, the wetland areas. If a wetland scientist suspects that there's a vernal pool, you know, then that's identified. But the scientists, sometimes they just suspect it, and it's the time of the year when they can't verify it, so they can come back. A lot of times, in fact, this is what we had happen with McCarthy School, they came back a year later, and I, I can't remem, I thought we had like seven vernal pools or something, and so suspected, and then they came back and they identified the vernal pools that were viable, and the other ones, um, that were not considered to be viable, or, you know, were, were not, you know, considered to be important. Um, and then what normally happens is when those are identified, whatever the, um, developer is going to do, they develop around those areas, and they design around those areas, and what we've seen is that normally there's enough property that, you know, it's, it, it hasn't been an issue. Um, I, I honestly, I mean, I honestly don't know if we would ever, um, recognize a v, vernal pool on a piece of private property, because unless they wanted to develop it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't come in for us, okay? So I mean, you know, at, at that point, I'm, I'm not, I mean, can't, if we don't identify it, then, you know, we don't really know about it. And the reason, I mean, the vernal pools are very special, um, and it is, you know, there's no fish, uh, they're home to only certain, um, species that live in a vernal pool, and they have no inlets and no outlets, um, okay? And that's, um, that's, you know, how they're identified. So I, I honestly don't think it's going to affect a lot in Nashua, uh, but the vernal pools that we have, we really should, um, protect them and, and conserve them, and the 100-foot buffer will do that.
Mr. Peterson?
Question for the applicant, um, do turtles and birds utilize vernal pools as far as, as far as their life cycle goes?
Very minimally, no. I mean, I wouldn't put it past a great blue heron to come by and snatch up a salamander, but it's not a, uh, a typical habitat. And the turtles need, you know, uh, water that's moving and a, a much larger amount of water.
Thank you.
Mr. Hirsch?
How, how do the vernal pools differ from the prime wetlands? Different classifications? Is, are, are a lot of these species also in the prime wetlands? Are they only in vernal pools?
Um, they're, they're only in the vernal pools because in other wetlands they'd be predated upon. So these are, um, species that rely on very protected secluded areas.
Is there a rationale for having, uh, a wider radius, a buffer, wider buffer around vernal pools as opposed to the prime wetlands? It would seem like a prime wetlands would be your bigger concern.
I, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, well, I, I would say yes, because, you know, in a, in a prime wetland, um, you know, like, let's say along, um, Salmon Brook, uh, there's different species that are in there, and the whole issue with the species that live in the vernal pool is that after they breed, they move upland, okay? So for a fish or turtle or heron or whatever along Salmon Brook, you know, that's their, their habitat. But the issue in the vernal pool is that the species move, and that's why you want to have that protected area, so that, um, you know, as the young come out, um, they, um, you know, they have an area where there wouldn't be bikes or walkers or wha, whatever.
Thank you.
Sir Hudson?
I think, Mr. Chair, just a couple of things. Uh, in that document that, uh, Mr. Peterson was referencing, it does, part of the diagram, one of the diagrams it has, it shows a circle, which is a buffer around the pool, I guess, and it talks about not developing within more than like a quarter of the circle that surrounds it. In other words, it's not, it appears it's not a full, both buffer with no impact anticipated, if I'm reading it right, but again, I'm just, I just Googled it, and I'm just looking at what he was looking at. I would note that 100-foot circle is .7 acres, if I did my calculation correctly. So if the pool was zero feet in, uh, size, you'd have a 3, .7 acre area that would be protected. So if it gets up to, you know, as was noted... So if it gets up to, you know, as was noted, a third of an acre or whatever, or less, it's going to be a pretty big area.
Yeah, that's my concern.
And my concern is, not so much for the big subdivisions, that sort of thing, but more for the individual homeowners. I just don't know if that affects, affects development on their lots, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the, the reality, though, is if you're talking about a smaller lot, even with a 20-foot buffer, it, it's going to be impactful. And, you know, ultimately, like any other zoning requirement, you know, the homeowner would have, you know, the opportunity to seek a remedy before the zoning board for a special exception. I mean, I don't, I don't see any, you know, developers here, you know, who are expressing concern about this. And given that there is ultimately a remedy and that this is, you know, a, apparently a, and, you know, recommendation by people who are expert in this field, you know, I would be inclined not to, to second-guess that judgment, you know, and so be more inclined to make a favorable recommendation. But I'm obviously happy to go with whatever the board is inclined.
I, I just feel a mandate like this potentially would take a huge amount of land, you know, potential, you know, land, not necessarily conservationally, but other land, out of use space, out of, out of development potential. And I think to have that kind of a broad mandate, like you're saying, seven tenths of an acre, you know, is an awful lot of land. I, I just don't think, and without understanding the impacts, we don't know if there are, you know, 100, 1,000, 10,000 vernal pools in the city, for example. We have no idea. And I don't think, from what I'm hearing, I just, I don't think we should give a carte blanche to say, okay, anything beyond that 100 feet is all you can do, work with.
Yeah, I mean, just to be clear, I mean, there, it is, we're not talking about creating a standard, it's an existing buffer of 20 feet. So it's about, you know, so it's not as if it's not, there's no impact now. But begin, I, I guess I would say, if, let's, if, if there's a desire to make a motion, let's make a motion favorable or unfavorable, and we can always discuss further. But, you know, I think, I think it'd be good to make a motion at this point.
Can I just ask one more thing?
Yes, go ahead.
We just recently updated our natural resources inventory through the National Regional Planning Commission, and we've been working on all of the maps there to identify the wetland areas, okay? And of course, you know, vernal, open spaces and, I mean, various maps, open spaces and wetland areas, okay? So those really have been identified through the natural resources inventory. Now, obviously, you know, we didn't go into people's backyards, but I mean, the chances, you know, the, the chances of there being a vernal pool in somebody's backyard, I mean, it's just, I mean, I can't even fathom it, versus what we come across all the time, you know, our homes that have been built in the wetland buffer, okay? And I mean, we, we come across, not uncommon for us to come across a house where half of the house has been built in the wetland buffer, okay? And there's some violation because they took down a tree and, and didn't realize it. I mean, that's pretty common. So, you know, I, I haven't, we've been working on the maps to make them more granular. You know, we recognize that all maps, you know, none of the maps are, like, perfect, you know, because things change in terms of erosion and where rivers move and that type of thing. But as far as, you know, the, the majority of the wetlands in Nashua, they've been mapped out, so we do know that. But I've never, I mean, and I've been on the commission now almost 10 years, I've ne, never heard of a vernal pool that's basically in, in somebody's backyard.
Mr. Peterson?
Regarding Mr. Hirsch's concern, the change to the ordinance says, "Vernal pool boundaries to be determined by a certified wetlands scientist. Buffer boundary to be determined by certified wetlands scientist or licensed land surveyor." So on a case-by-case basis, they will evaluate, you know, what, what the buffer should be. It's not like a fixed 100-foot, you know, radius all around.
Did I misunderstand the, I thought it was a, regardless, I thought it was 100 feet. I haven't had a chance, I haven't read that, I don't know.
Well, it's, it's in the ordinance.
It's, it's 100 feet, I think it's, it's, but the, the point is, I think what Ms. Peterson's saying is it's, that wetland scientist would determine sort of where the 100 feet begins and ends.
Yeah, because if things aren't in a perfect circle, you know, you have to, like, see where the water goes.
Okay. Is, is someone interested in making a motion? Again, just a reminder, all we're doing is making a favorable or unfavorable recommendation here to the Board of Alderman, or we can make a recommendation favorable, unfavorable with comment.
Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to do so, but I, Mr. Hudson, I'm sorry, did you have anything else? I'm sorry, I, I thought I saw your hand go up.
I'll put it soft, like an auction, hold my hands up.
Okay, for, for discussion. Mr. Chair, yes. I'd like to make a motion to make a favorable recommendation regarding ordinance O-23-062, Amending Land Use Code Regarding Wetland Buffer for Vernal Pools.
Thank you, Mr. Ballinger. So that is a, a motion for a favorable recommendation on O-23-062. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Peterson, and now I would open it up for, for discussion. Mr. Ballinger?
I, I guess, maybe just to bolster some of the thought behind my, my favorable recommendation, it looks like a lot of the larger undeveloped parcels within Nashua are either city-owned or were already aware of them with some degree of development potential. I'm thinking of perhaps the Flatley Parcels west of the Turnpike, or maybe a handful of others. But I, I, I think the largest impact would be to those larger parcels. I, I do agree with the sentiments that, that you spoke of earlier, Mr. Varley, regarding a smaller parcel, whether you have a quarter acre or something like that. I, I, I think the likelihood of having this impact you is far, far less. And if you, if you supplement that with the fact that there, there is a, a path to remediation via, via zoning relief, I, I don't see this as particularly burdensome. I, I think, given the level of development that we've already seen in Nashua, I, I think if you were trying to, to pass this in a, in a more rural undeveloped community, I think that's potentially limiting development potential to a far larger degree if you were, say, Hollis or Brookline. But I, I, I think, given what's already built out here, I, I personally feel that it's, it's not, it's not unduly restrictive.
I respectfully disagree. I feel that you're putting in place something where we can't predict the impacts. We don't know really what is out there. No one's catering, no one's, you know, it could be anywhere. It's one thing if you go onto our conservation land or whatever, that's fine, or city-owned land, but I think to subject private landowners, that's unreasonable.
Other comments? Okay, so we've got the motion from Mr. Ballinger for, to make a favorable recommendation. We've got a second from Mr. Peterson, so I will call the question. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So that motion passes with five ayes and one nay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So next up on the other business is the review of the 2024 meeting dates. And typically what we do, you know, historical practice here has been, everybody sort of takes this back, you know, reviews it, evaluates whether there's any dates that might be concerning, and then we'll come back at the next meeting and then finalize the schedule.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ballinger?
After a quick glance, I, I didn't see anything that really struck out. We, we missed February vacation, April vacation, and Fourth of July weekend, so I, I, I think barring that...
We've had a lot of practice.
Those are usually, those are usually the, the sticking points, those, those three, so.
Yes.
But the, obviously, if we'd like to push this to another date, that's, that's fine, but...
Yeah, and I, I agree with you. It's, I doubt we're going to need to change anything, but just to give everybody the chance to, so, you know, we're not looking at it right now. Because I don't think it's that, I don't think we, there's no immediate urgency, right?
So, next meeting would be...
Yeah. Good. All right. Next up then, we have the discussion items. The, item number one, revision of the sidewalk payment and lieu fee. Dan, I know it was, I, I know we sort of had left this off for further thinking, I think was the idea last time, so.
Yeah, we're still in the same place. I still need to gather some additional data about what are the communities doing. I talked to Concord and Hampshire today. Basically, their end lieu would be to do a calculation, what the, what the cost of that piece of sidewalk will be and then a full contribution of the lieu. But that's just one data point, so I'm going to continue to gather more and be back with the board with additional information.
Okay, sounds good. And then the last item was the review of the, the bylaws and procedures. Again, this was the issue that we had brought to the table last meeting, and I know staff has sent around some proposed revisions, but Scott did ask if we could hold off on discussing this until the next meeting when he'll be here again, which I said, you know, I thought was fine. We can, I don't, again, I don't think there's any tremendous urgency to this one, so, so as long as no one objects, I think we just push that off until the next meeting. Okay. All right. Any other discussion items? Not on the agenda? All right. In that case, I will take a motion to adjourn from someone. Mr. Ballinger?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Ballinger. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion passes, and we are adjourned at 7:42.